Thank you so much. The time is now 5:06 PM and good evening and welcome to the September 24, 2024 Special Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. I'm Jonathan Briggs, Chair of the Committee and District Two Board Member. It brings me great pleasure, as I always say, to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our work tonight. We're going to move on to item 1.2 Roll Call. Ms. Adeline, please call the roll.
Mr. Jonathan Briggs?
Present.
Dr. Zafara Miller?
Present.
Ms. Lodi the Walker?
Present.
Ms. Pabla Buzo Strather?
Present.
Mr. Bradley Jackson?
All right. Well, I think with the Quorum present, the Policy and Governance Committee meeting will come to order. So this meeting was called tonight as a result of the September 17, 2024 meeting cancellation, which required the committee's discussion and approval of important legislative matters and policy reviews that are advantageous to the functioning of the school district. And we want to item 1.3 Adoption of the Meeting Agenda. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the September 24, 2024 meeting agenda. Great. There being no objections, the September 24, 2024 meeting agenda is adopted. And now we'll move to item 1.4 Approval of the Committee Meeting Minutes. If there are no objections, the committee shall approve the August 20 of 2024 meeting minutes as distributed. Great. There being no objections, the August 20 of 2024 meeting minutes are approved. Now I'm going to move on to public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. The registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded using video, audio, or written. There is one registered written public comment this evening that's from Siavondalan Robinson, individual who wrote about the inclusion of new preference on student ID cards. There are no live or pre-recorded public speakers, but we do have that for the record. And of course, we as committee members will read through all of those contents, Ms. Robinson. So thank you so much for submitting that. So we now move on to item 3.0 Legislative Agenda and we'll move to item 3.1 Legislative Platform Timeline Update. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Welsh for the Legislative Platform Update.
Good evening. Good evening. I wanted to share with you the, this is a draft at this point in time and the purpose of sharing with you this evening is to get your input and see if there's anything that needs to be changed, taken out, added, whatever, because this is your legislative platform for this upcoming legislative session. So this is again in draft form so that all the graphics, all the things that go with it that make it look bright and shiny are not in it right now. You just have substance. And so basically I'll just go through each section and maybe we should, as we hit the section, if anyone has questions or comments and things that need to be changed or added or you're okay, we just then move on. So the first one has to do with the local board autonomy. And basically it just talks about the fact that the Board of Education is absolutely the, the group that absolutely has to have the autonomy to be able to interact, first of all, with the community, get public input, may be responsible for academics and financial accountability and all the unique needs and circumstances of the community. And it is, and it is the board's responsibility to do those things. They are, they are the best people to support the school system and advocate for the school system. And if you scroll down a second, Cindy, please, it basically even, even the law talks about the role of the Board of Education and how important it is. So as far as supports, the first one is that the Board Governance of Education Policy, which is fundamental to an effective public education system that promotes high standards of academic and fiscal accountability. So that's just a basic general support statement. Then the next one is the Board Supports Appointment Authority for the Superintendent of Schools. The next one, Authority to Govern Its Own Operation as a Board. And then Supports Repealing Any Provision That Requires PGCPS to Award Grants to Nonprofit Organizations to Support Private Daycares. Then as far as opposing, it opposes legislation that reduces the autonomy of the board and the board's responsibility to determine board policies. Opposes legislation that reduces the board's governance and budgetary authority. Would you scroll down a little bit further, please? Thank you. And opposes legislation that interferes with the board's authority to negotiate a contract with its superintendent and any legislation that creates unfunded mandates. And I believe that is the last one under, oh, one more. If you'll scroll down one more, there's one more legislation that requires PGCS to award grants to outside organizations as PGCS is not a revenue generating or grant giving entity. Any questions, comments? Does this cover in terms of your thinking as far as what the, for the board's autonomy and what you support and oppose?
Can you just scroll up just a little bit, please? Thank you. You speak a little faster than my brain moves.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Also, can I, can I just for the sake of, I think, organization, can we actually raise hands and I just acknowledge you and we still have that two-minute timer? But Chair Walker, it looks like you were eager to share, so I'm happy to turn to you first.
Wasn't. I was just asking if they could move it up so I could read it. No worries. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions or comments about this first section? We still have about seven sections to go. Okay, Robin, I think we can move forward.
Okay. Then we'll go to the next one, which has to do with staffing and recruiting. It just talks about, you know, that, you know, we have some of the best staff and that we work very hard to get very talented and a diverse staff to meet the needs of our students. Then if you scroll down, I'll hit the supports and opposes. So the first of the supports, so we, we support funding to support the full cost of training staff on legislative mandated subjects. Last year, a couple of bills went through that talked about, like, I think the anti-bias training, things like that, and, but there's no funding that goes along with it. And yet we are supposed to be providing it outside of the school day, which means that costs money. So that's important. Then full funding for mandated teacher certification programs. Again, bills were passed last year, which were, we were in favor of in terms of providing alternatives for teachers so that it opens the door for us to be able to hire more teachers. But again, it was definitely that it's the responsibility of the school system to cover those costs and that they were not funded. And then we support legislation to provide funding to supplement local funds for salaries that match private industry salaries to improve the recruitment of IT staff, especially in the area of administrative applications and cybersecurity, which we had last year, but it's, it's very important just because that's a critical need area. And then that we support legislation to require higher education educator preparation programs to provide training on the science of reading and literacy instruction. So with this Maryland State Department of Education's new policy on literacy, it is, it's, it's an excellent policy from the standpoint of what they're trying to promote in terms of the teaching of reading and what's required in order to teach reading. However, it is, it's working almost off the premise that what, once we have, we get the teachers, we'll, we'll just do all the training for them. And so this bill is, this supporting is to say, it wouldn't hurt to have some legislation out there that says higher ed is also required to train teachers in education. I mean, and reading instruction and this, and the, all the research that is, has bared out for literacy and reading. And then the last one is that we oppose unfunded mandates. So then, any questions or anything related to the, to the staffing?
Recognize hands in the order that they're raised. Or you can come off mute if you, for whatever reason, can't raise your. I'm going to raise my hand just for the sake of process, but I did have just for the last bullet point that you mentioned about the higher education institutions. I think that's, I think that's a great idea, as you mentioned, and I wonder if maybe we even push it further and say like, subsidies or incentives for our, for partnerships with higher education institutions, like if there's something that the state could do to really encourage even the development of those types of programs where they are really focusing on the science of reading, literacy instruction, because that may be some of the, the gap too, is like the incentive of a, you know, institution that want to even focus on that. If it's cost prohibitive. I'm going to turn to Vice Chair Miller.
Thank you. In, in this last one, I really, I really liked that you added this because I know that they do require teacher and any educator to take reading instruction. I wonder whether we want to be specific with the science of reading. I know that is a research base right now, but three, four years, three, four years from now, if something else comes up that is a stronger base for reading and we're saying the science of reading, then we'll have to go back and change the law. And if that doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. I do, I do really wholeheartedly want this to go through, but I didn't want to tie our hands with the specificity, if that makes sense.
So I will say that I know MSD has had some conversations with different universities and there's lots still out there on reading, on all different types of theories and ways you should teach reading. But they're very specific about the science of reading and literacy instruction, that this particular instruction, science of reading, because it is so research-based. So for purpose of what we need right this moment, I really believe that we probably want to keep it there. They do. They, they discussed it repeatedly. I know that they have been working with Morgan University to, to, to work a program out, but it sounds like they would, you're really talking about some definite specificity in the type of reading, because I know in the past, there always has been like a, like a six credit requirement for reading, but this is way beyond that. So that's the only reason I did include science of reading.
Dr. Miller? That makes sense. Sounds, sounds good to me. Makes sense.
Okay.
Are there any other questions about this section? All right. I think we're good to move forward.
So the next one is curriculum and accountability. And this one, we wanted to really make sure that there, that our feeling is that it is the responsibility of the local board for selecting and implementing standards based curriculum and selecting textbooks and instructional materials that align with local values and priorities. So when legislation and last year, we had a good number of bills that came through in which they wanted to legislate specific curriculum and curriculum standards. And when that happens, then we lose the opportunity as a, as a school system to really incorporate into the curriculum many of the local values and priorities that are important, like for Prince George's County. So that is why it's so important that we don't want legislator, legislation, legislate, the legislature to be mandating what curriculum we're teaching. And then if you proceed a little bit further down, Cindy. And then it just talks about the fact that the board, along with the help of the superintendent, really are, they're responsible for the curriculum and also, I mean, we have, our staff take the standards that come down from MSD and they are the ones that put together and write all the curriculum and any system-based assessments. So we support legislation that allows for continued flexibility with grading, limited requirements that are attached to, attached to blueprint funding, more local control over blueprint initiatives, mandating, we support any legislation mandating that guidance from the AIB and MSD regarding blueprint requirements be provided 18 to 24 months ahead of the deadline for meeting the requirements so that PGCS, he, ah, I can't talk this evening. PGCPS is able to make the necessary operational adjustments to comply with the requirements. So what has happened and repeatedly is that the, the mandates come down and they want, and they have the requirement, that what the requirements are, which have to be done by such and such, but no guidance is coming. And then it comes at the last minute. And some of the things that we have to do as a system, they're massive. They're major changes that have to occur. So we need adequate time to be able to do whatever it is required to do so that we can meet the deadlines. So we think that is really important for, for anyone writing legislation to remember. And then as far as opposes, we have, if you'll scroll down, please, thank you. Requirements by the AIB, MSBE, and MSD that makes PGCPS responsible for the administration of the financing, accountability, or operation of private providers for publicly funded pre-kindergarten, any legislation that mandates or prescribes curriculum and related unfunded mandates, any increase in state assessments requiring an increase in testing time for any given student, statewide controls over student information systems, and legislation that mandates that PGCPS be responsible for programs and activities outside of its instructional responsibilities. So any questions or anything with the curriculum one?
I'm going to raise my hand again. But so if you could just scroll up slightly, Cindy, to the support. So I wanted to say that last bullet, which I'm fully in agreement with, makes a lot of sense, but I just wonder if 24 months is a lot of time. Like, I feel like 15 months or 18 months seems reasonable, but I feel like 24 months, sometimes, you know, I think the, the more time that passes, education is really one of those things where we don't have time to waste because students are constantly matriculating to the next grade level. So I just wouldn't want to set a standard that, you know, two years is a reasonable amount of time to like implement things that might need to be, you know, they may need to be implemented to really meet specific standards for students. I wonder if that could be adjusted to like maybe 15 or 18?
I could say be provide at least 18 months ahead of time or no later than 18 months ahead of time or something.
Yeah, something like that. Thank you. Dr. Miller?
I, I was going to just circle back with the comment about 24 months. I hear what you're saying, Chair, but I was, I want us to consider that depending on the mandate, some take longer than others. It doesn't mean it can, it doesn't start before that 20-month period, but give us an opportunity to try it out during even that 24-month period. So I wonder if we change the wording to up to 24 months instead of giving a definitive, like 18 or 15. So it gives us at least, you know, some time to prep. And maybe in that second year, most school systems will be trying it out and fixing some of the glitches. So by the time that 24 months has gone by, it doesn't mean they haven't started the initiative. This means that it's given them an opportunity not to be held accountable for it before they have a chance to try it out.
Um, no, I definitely hear you and I think that those are good points. The only thing I would say, and I think, and then I think we can move forward and also welcome Robin, if you want to add in your, your thoughts here, but I just think that with legislative language or even with requirements coming from the AIB, you know, this is like something that they've likely researched, that they're saying that the school district needs to do. And I think if we're setting a standard of 24 months, there's lots of interpretation there. And even when I'm thinking about like other, I happen to just, when I was making that 15-month recommendation, I was thinking of in the context of the federal government, there is like a new shift in responsibilities that's coming from like a federal agency and they gave 15 months for industry leaders to do it, which is a year, right? That's a little over a year. And that seemed reasonable. So I think for a school district to have two years feels like, especially because it's just so high stakes with students needing to really get the resources, I wouldn't want to set that precedent. So that's why I'm making that recommendation. I do think if we want to, you know, have further discussion offline about it, I'm happy to do so. I don't think this needs to be a kind of a ongoing discussion, but I hear you. I think that's a good point, Dr. Miller.
I, I just want to say though, it's when they're not, this isn't requesting that they change the deadline for anything. It is just requesting that we get the information of how you want us to do it prior, to have adequate amount of time to be able to do it. That, so that, that's important to know, too.
Yep. Um, all right. So are there other questions about this section? Okay. Dr. Miller?
No, just to close that out, thank you for the clarification, Robin. And yeah, I think we should have it offline because I, I, I hear with the federal government, but I think we need to consider the heavy lift of sometimes training up to 10,000 teachers and the heavy lift that that requires with minimal staffing, just to get some of these things done right, rather than just done.
Yeah, let's have it offline. That's, those are really good points. Are there other questions about this section? All right. I think we can move to Funding for Success, Robin. Please and thank you.
Okay. So then the Funding for Success, basically, as we all know, adequate funding is critical if we're going to meet all the different things that, that school systems are involved in. You know, we're looking at first of all, student performance, well-being, eliminating achievement gaps, preparing students to be college and career ready, providing safe and, and secure learning environments, delivering professional development, wide variety of things. So a lot of times our state and local funding doesn't reflect the actual increase to school systems for complying with new mandates. So and then if there's unfunded mandates that require compliance, well, then we're talking about a lot of times in order to meet the needs of this new compliance-related thing, we end up reallocating our resources or cutting other programs to contribute to, that contribute to students just to meet the new mandate. So that was sort of the, the description to them. And then if you proceed further down, it talks about PGCS supports legislation that mandates that Prince George's County and not Prince George's County Public School fund the budget for the Office of Integrity and Compliance. Funding and resources to accompany any new legislation and a careful study of the costs associated with the new legislation. Because frequently there's, I mean, we've had inflation, you know, price of things have changed. And so it's important that they, they understand when they're asking for something, just how much it will cost. Using funds appropriated for education solely for educational purposes, requiring the county government to submit an annual report to the state, which would involve with AIB, MSBE, and General Assembly on the amounts and percentages of local revenues allocated to the local, to the school system budget. Because sometimes we hear all kinds of different, different figures and stuff that they're providing and it would be nice to just have a set figure. What is it that's being provided to the local school system? Providing a school system the option to remove all or portions of the foundation program funding from the 75% school-based funding allocation requirement. And that is not because that we don't want to make sure these schools have adequate funding, but there are times when depending on the school and what their needs are, they don't need the full 75%. And although we're definitely not in favor of top-heavy administration, it is often the central office that does all the grunt work behind the scenes and the support that you need to have in place just to be able to run the school system. So having that kind of flexibility would be extremely helpful. And then receiving funding for the tier-two students in FY26, because I think at this point they have moved it back to, I think FY29, 28 or 29. So, and it was originally at FY26, so we like that. And then receiving funding for the implementation of the MSD literacy policy. So the training, I just actually listened to a state board of education meeting today and the training that's involved for the student, for staff, and we're talking the K, training from K to three and then three to five for these teachers, but also having coaches that work with the teachers in the classroom. So they're really providing on-the-job training entire time. So you think about our school system and how many elementary schools we have and how many, you know, how many students we have in K to three, how many teachers that means. It is a big heavy lift to be able to provide this really necessary training to our teachers. So and receiving any kind of funding for this will be critically important. And then we oppose diverting school funds appropriate by federal, state, and local government to fund non-public and private organizations. And that, that, any language you see as it relates to that really refers to the one bill that got passed last year where we are supposed to be giving out grants and we're using funding that we receive for education of our students to, you know, fund these grants, which really is contradictory to what we want to do and what we're required to do with the money. So, so any questions related to funding?
Board member, Boosa Strather, saw your hand?
Yeah, thank you so much. Well, my, my concerns about bullet point one, go back to our board autonomy. I, I can't support bullet point one without supporting a repeal of the bill for the Office of Integrity and Compliance as a unfunded mandate and duplication of the board's role in governance and auditing of the, of PGCPS. So for this one, I, I feel like it says we are actually supporting this office by even suggesting a move of the funding, whereas I, I wouldn't be comfortable with this without our, our, going back to section one of our autonomy and having a repeal of this office. Thank you.
Well, and I just want to clarify because I read the, that specific bullet point to say that the county would fund the office versus the school district. Are you saying that you, you're not in support of that?
I'm not in support of the office without our, without there being a bullet point added that we support a repeal of this Office of Integrity and Compliance. I'm not agreeing that it should be funded by anybody. It's a, it's a waste of the taxpayer dollar to create this duplication and to impede upon the authority of a fully elected board on behalf of the, the residents of Prince George's County. So I just can't support it being funded at all.
Okay. And we don't have a timer, so I want to make sure that, that if you have anything else, I'm Board Member Boosa Strather.
That is all.
That's all. I'm going to move to Chair Walker.
Hey there. I think for purposes of the Policy and Governance Committee, I think there's two different looks at this Office of Integrity and Compliance as related to what our thoughts are. I think that the, what we want to be very clear on is that there was a bill that was passed for a four-year time span. So in my mind, regardless of we agree on it or not, what it is, is that it is here. And so our work for this Policy and Governance Committee is to make it as efficient as possible. And then there is the other battle. Right now, for me, a repeal is not in my, while I think, I know for sure it is redundant. What I do know that it is here and it's in a bill to be here for four years. So I want to put our time, my proposal is that we put our time and energy on modifying the wording as related to what is inside of the bill to best fit and remove the redundancies that we not only see in the system, but ensure that it, this $1.4 million non-funded mandate is moved to a different entity. So that's my take on this particular Office of Integrity and Compliance as related. So what will be going to this Policy and Governance Committee as of the upcoming meeting that we have is a mocked-up bill for us to be able to take a look at so that we can make it the most efficient, accountable with ownership and integrity for our board. So that's just a heads up on what's coming. Thanks.
Okay. And I didn't hear, I didn't hear pushback against the first bullet, because I think the first bullet is essentially saying what, what you all are saying. And I think that it goes, it, it doesn't go as far as what Board Member Boosa Strather wanted. So that made sense, the addition that she mentioned, but I think we have that language in there that's pushing back again.
Yeah, no, her, her specific push was not to have it at all because it should be repealed, period. So that wouldn't even go on there at all. Because she would like for the push from this committee to be to repeal the bill. You know, that's what, that's what I heard from Sam and Boosa Strather.
Yes. And I think that's what, I think the, the bullet point does not say that. It says the, the opposite of that. But Board Member Boosa Strather?
Yes, Chair, Chair of the Board, Walker, did express my sentiments of repealing the bill that created this duplicative office that interferes with the autonomy of the elected Board of Education that was elected by the people of this county. I, I would prefer that we had a statement that we support a repeal of this bill in the first section, now that I'm seeing this part lower down. But I will, I've stated my, my views to my colleagues and we will just move forward. Thanks.
Yeah. And I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think Board Member Walker is kind of wrapping this all up in a bow and I think probably can move forward, is that she's saying we can align on that and we'll have discussions about the, the bill and the proposed amendments to it. And then I think from there, we can probably figure out if we'll add a blurb in there in that language. So likely we'll have more discussions about it. Are there other questions about this section?
But Jonathan, can I just say, although it doesn't say in the first section about the repealing the bill for that office, we do have language that says we support the authority of the board to govern its, its operation as a board. So it's own, you know, your own operation, internal operation, which goes, you know, indirectly to this whole issue of the OIC. And then it also says opposes legislation that reduces the board's governance and budgetary authority, which again is the same idea that the OIC does interfere with the board's governance and budgetary authority. So although it doesn't meet what Board Member Business Brother would like to see, there is, there is some indirect language that is there for that reason. So I just want to say that.
Other questions about this section? I think we can move forward. And Robin, I, I always am so grateful for you. I know we have so much to get through, so I'm, I am a bit rushing this part because, um, we've had, we have a lot. So if there's nothing else, I think we can move forward to the next section.
So then the, the description paragraph really focuses first on the, where we're coming from as a school system, where we recognize that our responsibility is to, because of the school system's environmental impact on our buildings and operating its facilities, that we have to be environmentally responsible and work to create healthy places to learn at work and preserve the environment for future generations. And work to create healthy places to learn at work and preserve the environment for future generations. So in doing that, we really do need adequate funding to be able to cover the costs of increases in construction or retrofitting costs driven by inflation and labor costs, as well as just the cost of the things that you need to put in place to ensure that you're being environmentally responsible. And then the other issue that is a major concern has to do with the fact that we have so many aging schools. And, and all the things we need to do to ensure that, you know, they are functioning properly. You know, that the infrastructures are strong and supportive. But at the same time, they're safe and healthy for our students. So saying that, these are the supports. If you'll scroll down, Cindy. The first two, increased funding in all areas addressed by climate action reforms such as electric buses, climate-friendly cleaning supplies, solar energy, et cetera. Then the second one is the continuation of the Aging School Program and increased funding from the Aging School Program. So we don't want them to eventually rescind that program. We want to continue. In addition to that, we want them to increase the funding that comes from the Aging School Program. And then I don't know if there's any more. If you'll scroll down, Cindy. Further, yes, and create, can you go down, go up one section? I'm missing one bullet. Thank you. Increase state funding for school construction, innovate, innovation, renovation projects that is commensurate with monitoring costs of designing, building, renovating, maintaining high-quality learning environments. Increase state funding for school construction to implement climate change action projects when constructing a new school building. Funding of systemic projects to improve the health, safety and learning condition of school facilities. Renewal and expansion of the Built to Learn Act, Built to Learn Act. And then increase funding to provide additional space for CTE, full-day pre-kindergarten programs. So those were all the supports. And then if you scroll down for the opposes. We have legislation mandating project, project labor agreement, agreements on major construction projects and then unfunded mandates. So that was for construction.
Any questions regarding this section? Seeing no hands, I think we can move to school and community safety. Please, thank you.
So then in schools and community safety, of course, so I'm talking a little bit more about how, you know, the concerns, any kind of school-related violence and especially implementing safety measures for emergency preparedness and training, which requires not just funding, but also us working collaboratively with local law enforcement to ensure we have infrastructure and technology upgrades, everything in place. And then on top of that, although we have pursued all the different Safe to Learn Act grants that come through. And generally speaking, they're non-competitive grants. So Prince George's County usually receives at least a million, a little bit over a million on these grants. We did buy all of the safety locks for the schools, for the, so that the doors lock from the inside versus the outside through these types of grants. And a good number of the metal detectors have been come from that grant as well as we did pursue the twenty-four, twenty-five grant to cover costs of metal detectors. But saying that, in spite of that, we're still in need of five million dollars to equip all the middle schools with metal detectors as well as pay for staff to monitor the metal detectors. So if you scroll down, Cindy. First, we support, this is, this is, I didn't write about this in the paragraph, but we do support this. Mandates regarding the provision of safe pedestrian walkways in which the County Public Works Office is responsible for assessing assessing and determining traffic safety needs, traffic timeline, accidents, traffic flow, pedestrian traffic and other factors used to determine the requirements for sidewalks and traffic signals. So I don't know if you recall, but last year we had a bill that came through that had that, but it was all on the responsibility of the school system. And the school system is absolutely not equipped to be able to do those types of things. We, you know, we don't have the, the equipment or the people trained in these areas to make those kinds of assessments. So that's why we feel that if legislation is going to come through, we do support it because we think it's critically important for our students to be safe when they're walking to school. We, but we also think that the County's Public Works Office should be the office responsible for doing the things that need to be done in order so that the walkways are safe. And then if you scroll down further, we have continuation of the Safe to Learn Act grant funding for school building security measures. And listed out what they might be. We also added funding to support the costs of purchasing and operating metal detectors in all middle schools. And that's over and above the Safe to Learn Act and then funding for crime prevention programs for students. Any questions?
Board Chair Walker?
Yes, thank you so much, Robin, as always. So the safety and security, I recently learned about a bill that got passed last year. I was hoping that you could help me dig into this one a little bit. It's HB thirteen ninety. And Delegate Kevin Harris submitted this one and it's, it's called Public Schools, Public School Construction Funding and Administration. And my understanding is that we could really use a lot of that money to help us in our schools and for security enhancements. I do know that Superintendent House is looking at additional creative ways like AI and other things. And, and other things that he'll talk to us about, about school safety. But not only at our middle schools, but also at our elementary schools as well. So if we could, I guess the request is offline of here to, I'll forward it to you, but to take a look at this bill and see which pieces of that we're able to use. That's that one. Then the one above it, I'm sorry, I couldn't get to it quickly enough, was the maintenance and construction. I think that was the one, yeah, if we can just, if I could just reserve the right to just follow up with you directly because I can't do it here. It's just moving too fast. For me to be able to talk to you about maintenance and just the wording inside of there for the additional dollars that you already talked about.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and was that, was that House Bill thirteen nineteen?
Ninety.
No, one, three, nine, zero.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
No worries. Let me, I'm going to forward it to you right now. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
Also just say this, and I think this might help where like as far as process goes, you know, this is really, this is our platform, right? This is very high level, what we generally buckets of what we care about. But when we get into the legislative season, we are going to, you know, outline with these high-level themes, the specifics around, around legislation that is moving through the General Assembly. So I think what might be helpful is even if you wanted to share like the specific bullet points of what you want to see. That would be help us as we're thinking about what we'd share with those committees or with those legislators. Because these are just high-level themes. So I don't know if we necessarily would need to change the work plan per se based on, on that. But I think we can probably have an additional.
Well, I think part of it, and maybe you're going to get to it, I really, I, I hate to say this, but I don't know the process. We haven't outlined what the process is yet for, you know, how we get information in, if it's this form, how does it work? So as soon as I know that, I probably won't say, if it wasn't the right time to say it, I apologize. I don't know where it is to say it. So if you just hook me up with what the process is, I'm absolutely happy to follow it.
We can follow that. Yeah, we can follow up with that.
Thank you.
Board Member Boosah Struther?
Thank you so much, Chair. I, I think it's important that we replace the word metal detectors with AI weapons detection systems because these are two, two different products. And we are only using the AI weapons detection systems and there's confusion just to avoid any confusion about, about that. Because there are school systems that actually did have weapon metal detectors and they are switching over to these, what we call these, you know, touchless AI weapons detection systems, which hopefully will get better and smarter with each year. They're not ideal yet. They, we, you know, we were promised that our students could walk through with everything in their backpack. That hasn't been quite, the technology hasn't been quite there yet. But I, I feel like it's really important that we as PGCPs are using that terminology because it's very upsetting to me when I see comparatives and you see a school system in Virginia, Northern Virginia using the exact same system as a weapons, AI weapons detection sounds, you know, technology advanced and and fancy and less invasive. And then in PGCPs, the exact same system is called a metal detector. Old-school authoritarian. You have to take your things out of your bag. So I, I just think it's important for many reasons. Thank you.
So, so one, I just want to share that there is an AP that has not been totally finalized. I think we're waiting to get something back from Safety and Security Services, but it actually talks about safety enhancement systems. But then it includes within that, it could be cameras, it could be anything enhances. But now I'm wondering if in fact, if everyone, it would be an agreement to AI weapons detection systems as we work on that AP that we changed the name of it. And so that we're consistent in all of our language. I, I just a thought, I'm just thinking about when you brought that up. So.
Robin, and I have a question too about security. Might I make a request that maybe we can just follow up with the security team, the department? And just get the exact name that they're using? Because I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to oversell what we are using if it's not an AI, you know, detector. If it is, then that's great. And I think we should be saying those things. The other thing I did want to say was, one of the things I do want to make sure we add in here as a support just from hearing from a recent meeting with legislators and also talking to constituents is more security staff for the, the detectors, whatever we're going to call them. I, I know that like right now, there's just the, there, there, those, those detectors can only do so much. And if you have students, you know, coming in, in and exiting multiple entrances in a building, they can still get weapons into the building. And I know that, and I want to acknowledge that we have had incidents recently where that's happened. And I think that this is the opportunity to really own that and take accountability and say that I think we need to make sure that we're adding in there, that we need to have more security staff in addition and funding for security staff. Perhaps allocate, you know, list it out in the legislation.
So Jonathan, Cindy, will you go back to school and community safety? So I did, I actually got, this is further down. I actually got from Safety and Security Services, I asked them to break it out for me so that I would have the total cost of, of everything. And we still need another one million four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to cover the AI weapons detection, detection systems for the middle schools. But in addition to that, we need another three million five hundred fifty-one dollars, fifty-one thousand and forty dollars to cover the cost of staff to be able to run the, the, the equipment, you know, be there, then do what needs to be done. It's really monitoring more than anything. So the, so that added together, that comes up to a little over five million. So that's why I had incorporated that into the, to the, to the little description saying it's that we need, still need five million to equip all middle schools and pay for all staff to monitor the metal detectors. Then I did put down, if you look at supports, Cindy, if you scroll down a minute, and I can certainly change that language. That's not a big deal. Keep going, please. I have funding to support the cost of purchasing and operating metal detectors in all middle schools. I could change that to say for purchasing the AI weapons detection systems and staff to actually operate and monitor the metal detector systems. If that would be better.
I would love that because I think it's just explicit. There's no interpretation or ambiguity of what we're talking about.
Okay.
The second one. Are there any other questions about this section? Okay, I think we can move to Student Welfare when you're ready. This is Bush.
Okay, Cindy, if you'll scroll down up a little bit, please. Thank you. So then this just talks about overall ensuring that we have a safe environment for our students. That, that, you know, that's broad because it's fostering our culture of care and a climate of mutual respect, cultural responsiveness, attentive, the overall physical and psychological well-being of every student. And the reason why this is so critically important is because, I mean, there's very clear, the research is very clear that if students don't, are not feeling comfortable and they don't feel safe and they don't feel welcomed and, you know, respected, that really interferes with the whole learning process. And so it's not a very successful experience for them. So we are requesting, you know, sufficient funding for a wide variety of things. So then if you go down to look at supports, we are still definitely in favor of universal meals for students funded entirely by the state. Because who can do anything if your stomach isn't full and you're hungry? So that's really important. And then funding to maintain the mental health resources and supports that are currently being provided as their funds, but are due to sunset. And that sunset will impact our ability to provide the same level of mental health resources and supports that we have done. In fact, they, they sunset, I think, on thirtieth on Monday. So that's going to be a big impact for us. And then the next one is funding to support a restorative, sort of approaches coordinator for each school and for the training of teachers to implement restorative practice, approaches. Then providing PGPS and LEAs, any, any, any LEA who manages their own professional nurses and have school-based clinics. Providing independent avenues to secure vaccines to students to close the gap of immunization compliance. Because that is still a major struggle for not being able to get our kids in school when they're first coming because they haven't met all the immunization requirements. And then of course, additional funding for more professional school counselors, school psychologists and addiction counselors to improve the students' provider ratio. And then funding for training of parents and students on the prevention of drug addiction. And then legislation that reduces barriers for students to access home and hospital programs as well as legislation that provides not necessary human capital to execute newly mandated job responsibilities. Because we did have one bill that came through last year that did add a tremendous amount of responsibilities to each of the high schools. But of course, there's no funding and no staffing to be able to meet up, meet those requirements. And then the, the other one was opposes a legislation that restricts or eliminates the ability of PGCPs to contract for services. So last year, again, there was a bill that came through that, the whole goal that was to basically eliminate our ability to contract for services and all of our, we have a wide variety of special ed services and student services, student services, services that go to our students that are from contractors. If we didn't have them, we wouldn't be providing the services we need to provide them. So of course, we would definitely oppose anything like that.
Right. Are there any questions regarding this section? See Board Member Boosah Struther?
Yeah, thank, thank you so much, Chair. For the first one, universal meals, something that's been a concern of mine since the pandemic when, and we had funding for universal meals post, you know, with return, our return twenty twenty one, twenty-two was the amount of excess food and waste. And I would like to see, I've advocated for this last year that, that we put in there with provisions for composting and food, food waste reduction. Because it, it comes with a lot of wrap, cellophane wrapping when, when we have to move to, when we move to universal meals. So I would like to see some provisions around that, around management of, of yeah, food. I would love to see composting in there, but if, if that makes sense, Ms. Welch, to, to have some provision around the management of the excess food.
Okay.
Obviously meant towards car, climate-friendly reduction, you know, of the, of the food, excess food.
That makes sense. And I, I did have a, I have a clarifying question, Board Member Boosah Struther. Can you just clarify what you're, like what you're, you're meaning in as far as like language? There, are you saying that you want to have that amended in legislation or?
Well, I mean, just when we say we support universal meals for students funded entirely by the state, I'm asking that the state fund the, the, the universal meals and climate-friendly, you know, with excess food management, or even saying universal meals and composting program. I mean, because that's the reality of the, of universal meals is a lot of extra excess food and some of it can be shared. Whole food, whole, whole fruit and packaged foods can be put on a share table. But a lot cannot. And it, it's been going right to the landfill and we are the number one. We send the most food waste to the landfill every year. And so I just, I just think they have to go together, like we, to, for, you know, to meet our policies and where the state is headed. I just don't think you could have excess food and not have a food waste management plan around composting.
So, so I could just say universal meals with provisions for composting and food waste reduction. When universal, universal meals for students with provisions for composting and food waste reduction funded entirely by the state.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, I think those are interesting points because I didn't know, I was thinking for me, just when I was hearing that was like, is that contracting with, you know, businesses that have programs or that use environmentally safe products and is that changing who they're, you know, working with as far as vendors, which could also be the interpretation too. So I appreciate that clarification. Board Member Boosah Struther?
You're headed exactly in that direction. That's all stated in the Climate Change Action Plan. The two sections, the one on climate-friendly food and the one on waste reduction hits on all of that. So thank you for raising. Hits on all of that. So thank you for raising that. The source piece of it is important too.
Got it. Okay. So that's what you meant. Or at least some of it. Um, are there any other questions regarding this section? Okay, I think we can move to special education is next.
But the, um, the little description talks about that, um, we do, um, place a high priority ensuring our students are, are special students receiving, um. Uh, special education services have a high quality or receiving high-quality special ed programs and instruction that meet their needs. And then a little bit of language about the fact that ideal mandates that the federal government cover forty percent of the cost. Uh, for educating students with disabilities, but in practice, they only cover around fifteen percent. So that really is a shut shortfall. So, uh, funding for special ed is a vital component for ensuring all students receive. Uh, that the high-quality education they need in order to, um, um, really, um, you know, do what they need to do educationally. So then what I have under support is really, um, mainly about money. So if you can scroll up, please, Cindy. It says PG, PG, PGPS supports significant increases in funding to support high-quality special ed education services. Increasing the state's share of the total cost of non-public placements of students with disabilities. Incentives to attract high-quality special ed staff, teachers, related service providers and support personnel to ensure the provision of appropriate services. And then we oppose unfunded mandates to provide special education services. Any questions?
Yeah, questions about this section. I'm gonna raise my hand really quick. Um, I just wanna say, um, and I, and I, I'm like breaking my rule of keeping it short, but. Just wanna say quickly that I was listening to an AIB, um, meeting today about disability services. And I know that there's kind of a, um. Conflation of like, is disability special education, which they're very different things, right? You could have IEP, but not necessarily be in special education or, um, have a disability, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to clarify that when we're talking about special education, are we blending the two? Or do we have us a distinct disability section in the platform? Or are we also encompassing disabilities in special education?
Well, we're specifically, so is, um, so if you look at it, it's either special education or five oh four. And the criteria for receiving five oh four services or is not to, that is not as high of a standard as it is to receive special education services. But, but clearly you may have a disability that doesn't impact you educationally, but you might need an accommodation for something or whatever. So this is specific though to special education services because. Although sometimes five oh four services can cost money if you have to put in certain accommodations in place and stuff. It's, there's like, you can't even compare the two. The cost though for special education services. I mean, uh, uh, if you just look at even, you don't even get in and on public, but you just look at all the things you must have in place for students that do attend our public schools. And often very small classrooms, you know, additional staffing, all those types of things and all the related services that are, that are also involved. And, you know, it, it does cost the school system a long way. So that is specific to special education services.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say, because for the disability, which I know five oh four could be accommodations, it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that you have a disability per se. You might need to sit closer or further away from a screen, whatever. I just wanted to clarify that I do wanna have something in there about. Not putting undue burdens on, on fam, uh, any legislation that puts an undue burden on families. Um, to meet disability needs, because when I was listening to the AIB, and I can send you the, the video. Um, there was a parent who was talking about just all of the different things that she had to navigate, both in commuting. One was that. Parents may send their child to a school in a different county than where they work. And there's this commute issue and, you know, um, making sure that services are aligned and that there are any challenges there. There are certain thresholds as far as how much of, you know, the income that a family has to make in order to qualify for some of these programs. And then I think there's just some considerations that aren't necessarily, um, thought about when. Parents think about where their child is best suited to be versus what the school might think or what an outside program may say is actually best for the student. So. I just wanna make sure that as we're moving forward, we're, we're really charging legislators to not put undue burdens and they're taking into consideration transportation cost or. Other barriers to access that might exist for parents of students with disabilities.
So I will say that for anything that the school system is, um. Uh, you know, that goes through the IEP process, the school system is responsible to fund even transportation. They, and that's considered a related service. So you have to fund all those. If a parent decides they don't want what the school system offers and they wanna go to. Another school or something, or take their child out of this county, go to another, then of course they would have to bear that cost. So are you. Saying that you want PGPS to support any bill that, how, how did you word it? That it would not put undue burden on the, uh, on the parents?
Yeah. So as, as, as they're thinking about, you know, they're not thinking just about PGCS when they're making the legislation, right? Maybe our legislators are. From our county, but when they're making these decisions, they're thinking about the needs of parents in relation to schools. And they're thinking maybe there could be subsidies or there could be grant opportunities that they could put in some of this legislation to support the school district and funding. Needs. And so that's what I'm, the language I'm trying to get at, and I'm sure you can find a smarter way to say it.
Okay.
All I had to share, um, Board Chair Walker.
Yeah, I was just wondering for the sake of time, the same thing you coached me on, if we were going a little too deep for this particular one. For if we wanna take it offline or wherever the right form is. Cause you're gonna tell me where the form is, cause I know it exists, but maybe that's where we can dig in on, on this one too. Cause I would agree with you. I just don't know if it's the, the umbrella or if it's the under.
Yeah, I agree. Um, thank you for keeping me on task. So I think if there are no other questions about this section, we can move on to information technology.
Okay, so information technology is, um, it just gives a quick description about the fact that, you know, basically we can't operate anymore without. Uh, uh, technology, cause we use it in every aspect of our operation. Um, and not just in this classroom, but administratively we, uh, do. And so then, um, as far as the, um, supports. Um, first of all, uh, we support legislation that mandates that MSD convene a working group to develop guidance to local school systems on the safe and effective use of. Artificial intelligence, including but not limited to academic integrity, plagiarism, acceptable and unacceptable uses of AI for students and teachers. As student staff, uh, student and staff data privacy and data security, et cetera. Um, that would really, you know, we, we do have our policy and everything. We're not asking them to produce policy, but certainly. You know, they have the capacity to extensive, much more research and get more information. So therefore if they can provide guidance, that would certainly be extremely helpful. Then the next one is that, um, that they would have state levels, state-level standardized artificial intelligence agreements for local school systems to utilize when procuring software. To ensure the safety and privacy of students and educators and the protection of their data. So much of the da, much of the contracts that come through that, uh, that have anything to do with, uh, technology and now specifically with AI. Um, you really have to have the ability to, you know, uh, purview it in a very, with a fine tooth comb to make sure you're not missing any kind of tricky language here. That could get you as a school system in trouble. So again, that would be very helpful. And then second, last one, state-level accessibility evaluations for school systems to use to evaluate their technology tools for accessibility. So a couple of years ago, bill was passed that talked about ensuring that anything that we provide. That's technologically, we provide it, you know, virtual, anything like that for students with, um, for not just our students, it could be for anyone, for the public, anyone with a disability. That, um, accessibility looking, meaning all the requirements is, is, um, that's actually section five oh eight and all the requirements related to that. Are, are met, um, when any kind of, um. Uh, so whether it could, if they could give us, you know, guidance on evaluations so that we make sure that all our, everything we are using meets all their criteria. And that's it for that.
Thank you. Are there any questions, uh, concerning this section? Clarify, clarifying questions? All right. And I believe you said that's it as far as like, that's the end of the platform, which I.
No, it's not. You still have, you have charter schools. I can tell you that charter schools are very sim- similar to last year. That we, uh, basically we wanna ensure that with charter schools that they follow all, that anything as we as a public school require or mandated to follow, you know, in terms of accountability. And requirements that the charter schools have to meet those very same requirements. And that the schools, that the Board of Education, that it is the, um, it's the local board's authority over charter schools. And to grant charters, that we don't want that taken away and that, um, they, uh, we are required to comply with federal and state laws, um. Governing public schools and include fiscal accountability. That their employees of the charter schools, our teachers must be employees of the school system and include compensation certification requirements consistent with other public schools. In the system and then a legislation that allows school systems to set due dates for charter school applications. And so that we have adequate time to. Address financial staffing, transportation scheduling needs. And, um. The last one has to do with legislation to clarify ownership for charter school assets that have been purchased with public funding. Then we go into opposes and they're very, very similar. The very first bullet is though, uh, from last year, the very first bullet, provide funding to public charter schools for eligible expenses associated with public charter school facilities. There was a bill that came through last year, um, that actually talked about the, um, um, really providing, um, funding for charter schools to, um. Uh, for different expenses in their public school facilities. So there's all, the law already lays out that, that, that the charter schools got, I wanna say, I'd have to look it up, it's something like ninety-eight percent or whatever. So they're getting. They're getting the same type of funding that our, that our schools are getting. So then to add more funding to a charter school is, uh, and we opposed that bill last year. So in general, oftentimes a bill that didn't make it through one session will come back another session. So that's why I did include that in the opposes. And then basically, there are basic things that, um, that we don't want any bill that limits the board's primary chartering authority. Um, that weakens academic fiscal accountability, um, that recreates any kind of blanket waivers for charter schools. So that they don't have to follow their school systems policies and administrative procedures. Um, that they don't allow virtual charter schools, uh, and promote home instruction charter schools. Um, and, um, that they, um, allow charter schools to employ individuals who are not public school employees. Um, and that it, uh, also that their employees, uh, uh, we'd oppose anything that says they are, that their teachers don't have to meet the same certification requirements as our teachers do. So that's it for charter schools. Then we have two more. Yeah, then we're almost done. So this one, the legislative drafting is a little different, but it is critically, critically important. Because what happens, almost every single year, the governor signs stuff in May. And guess what? They expect the school system to start implementing July one. And then if you look at some of the bills that we have come through over the year, over, just looking at last year's bills. The kinds of things that they're mandating in assist, any system, but especially in a system as large as our system. It makes it almost impossible for us to be, uh, in compliance with the law. Because generally speaking, it requires a lot of planning, the budget cycle, the budget for the upcoming year has already been created. So. Now you're adding all of these unfunded mandates that where's that money coming from? Because you, you already had budgeted for the upcoming year. And so this section really talks about why it is so important for, um, and it also causes school systems to rush a lot of times or roll out of whatever the bill is mandating. So you're not getting the best quality of whatever it was that the bill mandated because of little time to do what you need to do to do it well. So this basically talks about that in the legislative, uh, drafting process. That any bill that was implemented, let's say, I mean, it like passes, uh, in May. That the implementation would be not for July one of that year, but, uh, the following school year, because that gives time to really plan and put everything in place. Uh, same thing with regulations. Um, and then the last thing is that legislation that contains, uh, requirements that conflict with existing legislation that we would oppose that. Because if you look at some of the, what we're dealing with, if you look at some of the things that are in ten seventy-nine that are also sitting out there in previous. Uh, education articles, they're, they're not in alignment. So that puts a burden on the school system to try to figure out what are we supposed to do? So we would really like that all the bills that are being passed, that they align with one another. So that was in that area. And, uh, so any questions in that?
Um, let's see, um, Chair, um, of the Board, Walker, and then I saw, um, Dr. Miller's hand.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, hey, Robin, for this one, I think the good news is that when we met with the legislative chairs, they were, um, in line with this. They were, they just didn't know the timing. So they said, hey, guess what? We didn't even recognize what the timing is that you needed. So just let us know what it is. Because we standardly go with the same thing every year. So this was brought up. So I'm excited that it's on here. And I think that we'll get support for this as long as we kinda outline what you have right there. I think we'll get support for it.
Perfect. Great.
Um, and thank you so much. Um, uh, Dr. Miller?
Uh, actually, uh, Board Chair's comment is really exciting to hear that they are considering this rollout. That's really exciting. Um, I'm just wondering whether we should, um, everything. E- everything would deter, i- is determined by how heavy the lift is gonna be. So giving them a definitive time would be really hard. But at least saying a year before we start putting it into place may help. Um, but the other thing that I wanted to add to this one is. Could, could there be some wording where if we start early, it's okay? And let me tell you why I'm asking. There's certain things that you wanna stop right away. That like you, it, 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 they just can't go on any longer. Like we just need to do it right away. So we want, I, I, I don't know whether in that case, we wanna be clear on that particular legislation and let this one go. Or should we put it in this one? So I'm not sure how to handle that.
Um. I mean, I, it's, oh, go ahead.
Let's see if you had a response, um. Robin.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not sure how, I don't, not sure how to write it that doesn't necessarily contradict what we have here. I, I understand what you're saying and I'm thinking in some instances, um, I, I can see that, I mean, I. It's sort of like, you know, federal law says you must do one thing, state law says you can't, you, you have to do at least what federal law says, but you can do anything over and above what federal law has mandated. So I'm just wondering, when you think of it from a local perspective, if we wanna go over and above what is mandated. Uh, even if, you know, I, I, I think we have, I mean, the board has the bill, the authority to be able to do something like that. So I don't know. I mean, if. If you have some type of wording you would like to put in there, that would be something, but I wouldn't wanna also undermine this language, cause I will tell you. That I can't, I didn't, I didn't ask them. They just said it to me. Every single chief that I met with, that was probably the thing they were most concerned about. They wanna be in compliance, but you're not giving us enough time to be in compliance.
Got it. Well, no, if you're saying that we have the ability to start it or to implement earlier. Um, then that's fine. Then we should just leave it like that. We don't, if we don't need to word it, saying that, hey, it'll start next year, but this is something that we know needs to. Stop right away for whatever reasons. Uh, and if we can just go ahead and implement earlier, then those are things that the administration would determine and move forward with.
Now, I mean, I think you do, for the best part, you do. I'm just thinking of even the bills we have on our list right now for this year. Many of those things you could do in advance of when, I mean, if you, if let's say they had really said it was a year from now that we could, like, for example. Uh, which we're gonna talk about shortly is putting numbers on badges, student badges. That would certainly be something that, I mean, if we wanna do it before it would ever be required, we could certainly do that. So. Many things, I don't know if everything, but many things you absolutely could do in advance.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I, I think we don't wanna have limits, limiting language. And I did, um, and this is, and I'm gonna stick to the rule of not going, um, you know, not going into like rabbit holes here, but I did just wanna say. Going back to the earlier discussion about the time, uh, limits, cause I think that this kind of aligns with that a bit. Um, I was thinking maybe instead of having months, it might be just like. And again, you can, you can, you can kind of enable the language here, but like. The equi, whatever is appropriate for, is a best practice for, um, or, uh, industry standard for that specific rollout. So if it's like auditing, right? And it takes two years for an audit office to get, you know, up to speed, then that's fine. And you can, you know, that would be very different from like, uh, maybe something else. And I, so I don't wanna have limiting language. And I think that was the point those we made, but maybe instead of having months. We could just have something that's very general and say like, it's the, that, that these legislators are doing the research on that stuff. In, in really thinking like what's reasonable for the specific rollout or implementation of a, of a requirement and mandate.
So just to let you know, I did meet with, um, 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 uh, John Williams and, um, legislative staff from each of the different counties. And this was a conversation they also had. And so actually they, they all came to agreement that. With that really what we should be really advocating for is that you give us to the next calendar year to, to be able to implement. So that's why I wrote it the way it was, because I was sort of wanted us to be aligning with whatever Mabe is coming out with. But if you wanna change it, that's fine.
I think we should do what Mabe is saying, cause I think that that helps us bolster ourselves. So yeah, we should be aligned for sure. Thanks for that context. Um, if there, are there any questions about this section? Right, I think we can.
And then I just have one other one. Yeah, that would talk very fast and it's a new one. And then I just have one other one, yeah, that I'll talk very fast, and it's a new one, also federal support for public education. And so um, and, and basically, all it's doing is saying that, you know, we feel that a lot of these federal programs need to be funded appropriately. You know, good example is idea with special ed services um, that we do need because all the, all, everything's sunsetting as of uh, Monday. We really need to have uh, additional federal funding for mental health services for students. Um, you know, uh, let's see what else, uh, that we feel that the federal government's role should be to supplement and support. Um, rather than mandate, because really education is a local effort. Um. So, and the funding related to cybersecurity threats, E-rate programs. Um. And then the, any federal mandate that, that does come out, it should be fully funded by federal dollars. And then two opposes, prior prioritization of public education funding, we do oppose that. As well as uh, federal efforts prescribe how school system districts uh, implement apprenticeship programs. Um, because we, I mean, we are, I think we're, we know our community, we know our businesses, and so we don't need the federal government telling us how to do it. So that was it. That's it. I'm done. Nothing else.
Any, any questions on this section? Um, I, Robin, I did have one just addition here, and this is.
Yes.
Piece, and that was around the federal government. I just wanted to say that I think maintenance of effort is the term where, you know, if they increased funding. And then there, there's a funding cliff because they're cutting that funding, which is the sunsetting of these um, dollars that we're getting. That they could really, I think if we had something in there where this is probably radical in some way, but like, they could consider, you know, grants or other programs to really cover some of that maintenance of effort. That localities aren't able to do, because a lot of that falls on states and it falls on counties to cover whatever additional funding the federal government was getting to fill that gap. And meet that kind of basic standard. And so if we could just have something in there, even though I know that's like a kind of shot in the dark or um, a tall order, I think that might be something just, just to say that we said it.
Okay.
Um, okay, so if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend the legislative platform to the full board for consideration. Hearing no objections, um, the legislative platform will be recommended to the full board for consideration. Now going to move on to item four point O, policies for first consideration discussion. Tonight, there are three items for discussion. We will have two rounds per discussion and vote for third round if necessary. Each discussion round per member will last two and a half minutes. We're going to move to item four point one, rules of procedure. The chair recognizes um, Mrs. Welsh for an update of the rules of procedure. What shall it be reflected as a bylaw, a policy, regulation, or rules of procedure? So our discussion that we've had, and then we're finally going to get clarity on. Uh, so I'll turn it to you, Mrs. Welsh, for clarity here.
So um, I, I went through uh, what that was presented at the board meeting, um, maybe the August meeting that went through um, what uh, Mr. Swift had provided. And then you had voted on different sections of that. And in essence, what I gathered from that was that um, there would, several of the bylaws, like ninety-three sixty, there, that's already being covered in, under the rules. And there's no need for um, anything else because we have that so that they can get rid of those. And then my, um, there were some, a couple others that were needed to be, that were, I think, um, rescinded, voted on. But then there was the conversation about changing all the bylaws to policies. So um, they, I, if I got, gathered it correctly, though, it was that you had voted to change all bylaws to policy. We don't need the name of bylaw, we'll just switch those to policies. But I would also recommend that as we move through these bylaw, these new policies. That we, there is no need to have a totally separate section in the nine thousands that. If you look at what you have sitting in your eight thousand series, which are all internal policies. That it would make sense to have, and we actually have had many redundancies between what sat in the nine thousands and what sat in the eight thousands. That it would make sense to have all of the um, that as we move these uh, into policies. That we then take them out of the nine thousand series and start incorporating them into the eight thousand series. So I didn't know what your thinking was on that. And as we go through tonight's agenda, within, we'll see where certain ones were recommending rescission. Already, we're moving through that process for the nine thousands.
Hey, so any um, any, any uh, questions or concerns or comments about the consolidation of the eight thousand, nine thousand series? Um, Board Chair Walker?
Hi, as you go over this in the public meeting, if you could just give that overview, uh, uh, even a more condensed one. It just says that we're rescinding these, and the reason is because they are Maryland State uh, statute versus uh, board policies. Uh, therefore, we have no governance to be able to change them. That's why we're um, rescinding them. Thanks so much.
Other questions or comments?
Was that a yes? I didn't know, or is Robin going to get back to me?
Oh, you stated that as a statement and not as a question, but I'm happy to say that, yeah, I think that's what we, um, that is what we discussed, and so happy to um, for draft language that way, yeah. Um, I see, I don't see a hand, but I see that um, Vice Chair Miller is off mute, so just want to clarify if you have any questions, otherwise. Um, I'm going to move forward. Okay. Um, so if there are no objections, the committee shall adopt that the rules of procedure be reflected as policies. There being no objections, the rules of procedures will be reflected as policies moving forward.
Well, you mean the bylaws, correct?
The bylaws will be reflected as policies now moving forward. Yes, sorry, not rules of proceeds, I want to say that again. There being, there being no objections, the bylaws will be reflected as policies moving forward. Um, we're now moving to item four point two, policy ninety-one hundred, officers. The chair recognizes Mrs. Welsh for an.
Put my hand up. I'm sorry if you didn't see, my hand is up. Can you tell? Or I can see it on my side.
I think you pulled it up. Yeah, um, uh, Board Chair Walker?
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, didn't we vote on this as a, on board last month?
To go to policy, you did.
Yeah.
The bylaws, I think, switched anything that was left over that didn't get put into the rules that were not, that they, you hadn't voted to rescind. I thought you voted that it was going to be policy.
And to move it to, to committee.
Yeah, we do it, yeah. Um, okay, thank you.
Um, and then before I move forward, um, when I recognize um, Mrs., Miss Adley?
Just a quick question. So I know we have the discussion around the rules of procedure. If that um, was going to be in the eight thousand or nine thousand series. Not just the standard rules of procedure. Decide what we're going to do.
Yeah, that's, and that's why you had that language in there around the rules of procedure, um, which.
But I, I guess another question would be, I, I, I didn't, I. I know there was conversation about saying that we'll make the rules of procedure a policy. Then there was conversation that talked about not making it a policy. So I mean, I, I don't care which way we do it. I will say this, that the way it's written, the rules of procedures. It is saying that basically, I mean, many of the things are not written out like we normally do in policy. Because instead he has an appendix there that lists out, that has the different laws that it's applying to. So um, if that, if you're not going to make it a policy, then it would be something that would just sit separate, I guess, and, and wherever you want to put it.
Yeah. Yes, um, I, yeah, and I want to clarify, so there, there's like, there, we were changing all of the bylaws to policies that we've had that discussion about. There is the one piece that was just around like governance, board governance, which tends to typically be bylaws. And that's the rules of procedure. So the question is really on, do we want the rules of procedure to become a, to remain a bylaw? Become a policy, a regulation, um, or be, or be referred to as a rule of procedure? Um, and so that is, um, I want to clarify that that was my, my fault there and not clarifying that and not fully understanding that piece. Um, but before we move forward on a vote, um, I want to uh, recognize Board Member Boozer Struther.
Yeah, thanks. I um. It, uh, I know, I mean, I know we're not supposed to have bylaws anymore, um, based on our par- parliamentarians advice. And when we did the rules of procedure at the August board meeting. I am, I'm looking at the motion. I know we, we accepted some edits and then we agreed to them. Um, and I believe. I'm trying to see if we actually declared that night. Um. Yeah, we were talking about, I think we were calling it a bylaw at the time. Um. We shouldn't have anything called bylaws anymore.
Correct.
So. And we're saying that a rules of procedure. It. I mean, to me, it would fit into some of, like, some of our policies are very procedural. Like that, that's why they exist, so. I just know we have to make sure it's not a bylaw. But we did do that work. We did agree to the document, to the final edits of the document.
Yeah, and I want to bring this back because I feel like that was the confusion that was on my part for not really um, clarifying that. Because that was the question that Board Chair Walker asked. We did, we made the bylaws policy, so all of those. There's that one piece around governance, and again, that piece is normally tends to be a bylaw. But now we're having a vote on whether that would be a bylaw, a policy, a regulation, or we would refer to it as a rule of procedure. Um, so that's essentially what we're discussing right now, is on the rules of procedure, what are we going to term it? Um, Board Chair Walker?
Yes, I'd like to propose that we just take this question and talk to our parliamentarian, because we did a lot of work. On making sure that that thing was sufficient for how we move forward, so we didn't have to come back to it. So I'd just like to recommend that we take exactly the question, Ms. Adelaide, um, actually probably wrote it down, I know. Probably revealed it, and we will talk to, I will commit to us talking to the parliamentarian tomorrow to get that answered. I feel like this is work that we've already done. I just would hate for us to vote on something here and re, and overdo what we did last time.
Um, thank you for that comment, um, Ms.
No problem.
Okay, just quickly, I hope I didn't confuse anyone. So I was just trying to understand what the document itself, the document we have called rules of procedure. Would that be just called rules of procedure or policy eight thousand or rules of procedure or policy nine thousand, rules of procedure? And that's my question.
Yeah, it's just called rules of procedure. Can we take that off and talk to the parliamentarian? I promise you, we went through this for hours.
Yeah, and.
Take that off, please. We, we will commit.
Okay, and, and, and I do think, I, I don't want it to have, I, I really, and this was again, I think this is my fault for not clarifying. So I don't want to have a redundancy. I do know that we have had a conversation with the parliamentarian a number of times about this. So I do think it's in our hands to decide, but if you want to take it back to the parliamentarian, and then I think we can just take a vote on that as a committee. Um, but otherwise, I think we can make a decision here around what we feel makes the most sense. Do we call it a rule of procedure, a policy, a regulation, or a bylaw? And we can just vote on that to simplify any additional things on our plate that we have to move forward. Um. So are there any, are there, are there, is there any opposition to us just voting now, or making a decision now as a committee? Is there any opposition to this being referred to as rules of procedure? Any objections? Okay, there are no objections, the committee shall adopt that the rules of procedure be reflected as rules of procedure. Um, and there being no objections, the rules of procedure will be reflected as rules of procedure. Um, and thank you so much for all that clarity, and I apologize, I should have been the person who was clear on that. Um, we'll move to item four point two, policy ninety-one hundred, officers. Um, I recognize Mrs. Welsh for an update on policy ninety-one hundred, officers.
So um. Since, so, now that we have, we're, I think, getting rid of all bylaws going into policy. I started going through all the nine thousands and I realized, so last time we met, we talked about the chair, that power, that bylaw at that point in time. And that was uh, ninety-two ten, I think. And so then I looked at, um, I look, we had one called the chair, one called the vice chair, one called, uh, I think it was the CEO, secretary, and treasurer. And then we have one called the officers. So the officers actually list out all these people and has a little description about each one. And then each of these ones about each of the other ones, except for the chair, which we've made major changes to. Also say the same thing, which seems sort of crazy, especially since if you look at this policy that we did previously about the chair. We spent a lot of time talking about the vice chair in this one, because we talk about if the chair isn't, is, if there's a vacancy or if the chair isn't present. Then the vice chair does the same thing that chair does. And so, uh, my recommendation was that we just do away with the chair, the vice chair, and the um, the executive officer, treasurer, secretary. And instead, call it officers, put all the information about the chair, it'll address the chair, the vice chair, and the um. And this, it'll be the executive officer, secretary, treasurer, which is has to do with the superintendent. So um, I'll go through it, and then if you don't want to do it that way, we can certainly uh, change it back. But it just seemed crazy to have these little policies that are just one-liners, when you could just consume, put them all together in one. So this is basically the same uh, policy or by, down policy was by law that we discussed. Except I did add vice chair and the secretary treasurer and ex, uh, and executive officer, secretary treasurer and executive officer. So um, I want to point out, if you'll scroll down, Cindy, and um. Oh, I did, okay, this is so interesting because uh, you keep going down a little bit further. So I ended up crossing out bylaws. But the last time, if you recall, we met and there was a whole conversation about um. The, your, the code of conduct for the board of that, I think it's zero one zero eight, and it talks about attendance. And that there was nothing referenced in attendance. So when I went back to look at that policy. And read about what is considered, like, basically when you're going to take action to have a board member removed because they've been not in attendance for too long. Um, that, that would make sense to describe that as a po, a vacancy. So I have any board member who, and this has come directly out of your um, um, code of conduct uh, policy. Any board member who misses three or more consecutive regular scheduled board meetings, work sessions, emergency meetings, public hearings, appeals, and or executive sessions, or fails to attend. Twenty-five percent of the board's regular meetings during any twelve-month consecutive, uh, twelve consecutive month period. So that would be, as you'll go further, as we go into the policy about vacancy, that would take care of it. But scroll up a minute, Cindy, because we also have the language in the policy about temporarily. So I then said, well, if, you know, if you're gonna get in trouble as a board member and the board can take action to remove you. Uh, when you hit with the definition for vacancy, then wouldn't anything else beyond that be, uh, less than that would be temporary? So I then took the language and said, any board member who misses two or less consecutive regular scheduled board meetings, work sessions, emergency meetings, public hearings. Appeals or executive sessions or fails to attend twenty percent or less of the board's regular meeting during any twelve consecutive month periods. So if you're thinking about the chair or even the vice chair, if you're, if you've done that, you're considered temporarily. But the minute you jump up to twenty-five percent or you're missing uh, three or more consecutive regularly scheduled meetings. Then automatically, we assume your, your position, that, that you've vacated that position and you're no longer the chair. Now, I don't know if you want to do that, but I did it based, I went back and listened to the video, and after reading through the code of conduct, I thought, maybe that would be just the way to go. But if you think differently, please let me know. And then um, I don't think there were any changes throughout the, the document, if you keep scrolling through, Cindy. Um. Because I think, uh, keep going down, because we had two there before, but if you keep going, it still has all the duties of the chair like we had before. Um, we did an official, the vice chair, and then we have, uh. So this is where you see if both the chair and the vice chair are temporarily unavailable to carry out the above duties. The remaining members of the board shall select other members to serve in the capacity of the chair and vice chair until the return of the chair and vice chair. And if you go further up, get, scroll back up a minute, I'm sorry. Uh, in the absence of the chair at a board meeting, the vice chair shall perform the duties ordinarily assigned to the chair. But then it goes down to E and says, in the event of a vacancy in the office of the chair, the vice chair will assume that, um. No, that's not correct. Uh, in the event of vacancy in the office of the chair, yes, the vice chair will assume the duties of the chair until the annual meeting in December, at which, scroll down. Um, the election of the chair will be held. Uh, and then if the vice chair declines to assume the responsibilities of the chair, then the board will elect a replacement for the chair. And then, in the event of a vacancy in the office of the vice chair, the remaining board members will select a replacement at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. So that takes, so there's two definitions I add, I, I think, but if you think differently, we can change it. It helps give clarity on what is considered a vacancy and what is considered when you're just temporarily absent from um, the board meetings. And I think those were our changes that we needed, yes.
Thank you so much, uh, Robin. Um, are there any questions concerning this policy? Board Member Boozer Struther?
Yeah, uh, looking back at that discussion, I was the one who had brought up that there was some confusion around the idea of notification. And, and I asked, well, what if the chair or vice chair, I think we were talking the chair, this one on the chair. Um, looking back at the, at the bylaw ninety-two ten chair was the discussion. What if they don't notify? And I think we, we.
So that needs to come out, right?
Well, I, I'm wondering if what you're saying today is answering my, that question. Well, I, I'm wondering if what you're saying today is answering my, that question. Because I remember we all agreed that there was a gap in, in process. Because the, it assumed that this temporarily absent chair would notify. But what if they don't notify? And we had the discussion about, well, then we go right over to vacancy. I remember, uh, Chair of the Board Walker, you know, guiding us over like, well, then do we move to the vacancy? Um, you know, that they're vacating the office, they've been absent four times. So I just want to, and I remember we, we decided that we didn't have a, a answer. So I guess I'm checking in to see, do we actually have an answer to, to that?
But before you, uh, answer the, oh, okay, she's back. I just want to say if that happens again, if she drops off, we can continue having discussion, but we can't vote on anything. Um, Robin.
Oh, I just want to say, I'm actually meant to take out this in a period of time and what, uh, greater two weeks notice from the chair. I wanted to take that out for exactly what you said at the last meeting because of the fact that, um, um, what if they don't give you notice? And I think that's what went back then to the conversation of the code of conduct. Because we already have standards set, so why won't we just apply those? So that I will take that out when it moves forward, the, the, in terms of the, um, one week notification. I mean, one, two weeks, uh, what is it? One month notification? I also meant to say one other thing, I'm sorry, is that, um, then there is, um, so it, so it already says this policy that was a bylaw already went into great detail about the vice chair. Because it's telling you the vice chair is there to pick up the responsibilities of the chair when they're not available. Um, but we then, I did add two, two sentences about the superintendent I meant to say. So the superintendent of PGs PS, this is G, Cindy, if you want to, if you want to scroll, does she hear? Yes, if you can, want to scroll down, I'm sorry, on page three, G and H. So the superintendent PG, PG, uh, scroll, keep going down a minute. No, I mean up, I'm sorry, keep going up, sorry. Um, okay, if the superintendent PG CPS is the secretary treasurer or executive officer, is the secretary treasurer, executive officer of the board. The superintendent may advise on any question under consideration by the board, but may not vote. So that's the language directly out of the previous bylaw that talked about the secretary treasurer and executive officer. And then, um, we also had language in one of them, and I put this in. Unless, uh, tenure or salary of, or the administration of the office of superintendent is under consideration. The superintendent or, uh, or the superintendent's designee shall attend all meetings of the board and its committees. So, um, if you think about our committees too, there's always someone designated by the superintendent, you know, as his, um, representative to be there. Um, so those were the other two things I added to it.
Thank you so much, Robin. I did just have one clarification around the twenty percent and the twenty-five percent. Um, can you just clarify for that twenty-five percent language? Is it that if a board member misses twenty-five percent of meetings, they're automatically, that triggers the removal process?
It triggers the, it allows the board to take, um, to, um, if you look in the law where it talks about the four areas of where a board member can be removed, and of course, it's not the board that does the removal, it has to go to the state superintendent. But all that information, uh, you would then put together your reasoning for why the person was not available and that they were out of compliance with the, the code of conduct. Um, and, and, um, so that's why it's important to keep, you know, track of people's attendance.
Okay, and then can you just clarify the distinction between the twenty percent again?
So then the only reason that I said, so if you're considered a vacancy at twenty-five percent, then anything less than twenty-five percent would be, you aren't vacant yet, you're still temporarily absent, but you're not vacant. So that's why I, I just took that, we certainly can add anything you want to put in there. But I was just thinking, well, if you don't meet that's, that criteria for, for being considered vacant, then of course you'd just be temporarily absent.
Are there other questions? Um, Board Chair Walker?
Yep, I just wanted to clarify that the twenty-five percent, so when someone's twenty-five percent, what it triggers is the board discussion. It triggers the board discussion to determine what the next steps are so that we can move it forward. That's just to put a record since we're on camera. The other thing is, um, uh, yeah, I'm in alignment. I feel, we've been talking about this. I, I feel like it's been probably over a year. And, um, I'm, I'm ready to move it. Robin, you've done such a phenomenal job at it. I think we are super clear. And as we continue to look at it and get public input, we'll still have more to talk about.
Great, thank you so much, Robin.
No problem.
Anyone else?
Thought you had a comment, Robin. If there's no.
Oh, no.
Okay, great. If there are no objections, the committee shall recommend Policy ninety-one hundred to the superintendent for approval. There being no objections, Policy ninety-one hundred officers will be recommended to the superintendent for approval. Going to now move to item four point three, Policy twenty-five sixty-six, student identification cards. I recognize Mrs. Welsh for an update on Policy twenty-five sixty-six, student identification cards.
So, um, we have, we, we did have a policy, that, that we do have a policy that talks about the student identification cards. Um, and the, um, the language, if you look at the language that starts in the very beginning, it was, uh, this is language that came from that, um, from that policy, because it talked about the fact that the reason we want our students to have a student identification cards um, is really for the safety and security of our students. So it says, uh, the board is committed providing for the safety of all students in Prince George's County Public Schools property and to creating and maintaining a safe and inclusive and supportive environment. School where students can be successful at achieving excellence and education. And then the purpose of the policy is to ensure that students in middle and high school wear a student identification card for safety and security purposes. Now, the policy, the way it reads right now, talks about only high school. But, um, I know there's been more and more issues at the middle school level, first of all. And secondly, the reason this policy came up was because of, um, of a house bill that was, um, let me see if I can find it, that talked about House Bill two eighty-four, that talked about what should be on the back of student identification cards. So, and in that, in that bill, it actually talks about both middle and high school students. So that's why I did say that the purpose of the policy is to ensure that students in middle and high school wear a student identification card for safety and security purposes. Um, and then we have a definition of what is a school official and what's the school property. Because you'll see that language in the, in the body of this policy. And then the nine eight eight suicide and crisis lifeline, which is what is supposed to be required, a sticker or something on the back of the ID card. Um, and that's a behavior crisis hotline, which provides free and confidential support twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for people in distress, prevention and crisis resources, and best practices for professionals. So, um, um, and again, that's driven by the law. And so then, um, the language, in order to assist in providing, uh, improved security within PGs PS, all students in grade six through twelve, uh, twelve shall be issued photo identification cards. And student will be required to carry these cards at all times while on PGs PS property. The number of the nine eight suicide and crisis lifeline, and now this is what I think you wanted, um, Jonathan, but please correct me if I'm wrong. And the web link address for reporting bullying, didn't you talk about some type of identi, and there was no telephone number, but there is a web link address that you could put on the back of it, shall be printed on the back of the student identification card. So I did put that in there.
Um, and, and that's fine, we can do the website. I think they, the, the bullying office talked about a QR code.
Oh.
And, which is fine. I think either way it's, it's accessible, but you know, QR code may be easier for students, you know, this, this generation.
But how about if I put web link address and or QR code?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the last piece, again, this is still much of the same language that was there before. But it says, students must present their student identification card to any school official upon request. These cards may also be utilized at various administrative purposes as determined by the school principal. Um, by the principal, such uses may include, but are not limited to admission to social and athletic events. Which again, that was previous language that was in the policy. And then, of course, the board authorizes the superintendent to develop an administrative procedure to implement this policy.
There any questions to this, about this policy? Board Member Boozer Struth?
Yeah, thanks. I, um, so I think, I just want to be clear. So in the policy, we're saying these must be on the back of the card, but that doesn't preclude the admin, the superintendent's administrative procedure for choosing other information to add to the back of the card. Is that if there's changes over time, that would make sense to have other, uh, useful links to date, to helpful student information. It's that, th- these are just what have to be there. It means the superintendent can add it, add.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they could, if there was something else that they thought was important to add.
Okay, yeah, and I, I also agree with making sure it's not all just QR code. Because we, at the middle school level, we certainly have a growing number of parents who would like cell phones to not even be used by their students while they're in school at the middle school level. That's, so I think that that helps there, so I appreciate that.
Oh, that's a very good point.
Yeah, that's a great point. Um, and, and I, and I'll say for that, that policy, I'm not sure. I think I was hearing that, do we want to keep it general? At least what I was interpreting, Board Member Boozer Struth, I mean. We have, we have the mandate about the nine eight eight suicide. We of course have the bullying piece. But do we want to have language in there that also allows her flexibility? Just in case there's any misinterpretation that the superintendent and his team can always add additional, you know, content to the, to the.
I would support a statement that says the administrative, you know, the superintendent, however, Ms. Welsh knows, you know, is the expert in how you say to the superintendent, your administrative procedure can, you know, choose additional information as deemed necessary, or whatever that language would be.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, and then are there other questions concerning this policy? Okay, um, if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend Policy twenty-five sixty-six.
I'm so sorry. I do want to tell you that you did receive a written comment, um, as a, under public comment down for tonight's meeting. And it was specific to these ID cards. So I wanted to bring that up before we move further out. Uh, it says, um, basically that, um, they think that this particular person, uh, feels that they should, uh, it should display the student's preferred name versus, um, when that name is associated with the student's gender identity. Um, um, and so I, that's basically the concern. She then talks about her child, you know, coming to school and using preferred names. Um, it could display prefer, and so it was changed at some point, uh, that she's talking also about changes in the preferred name. But, uh, according to board policy zero ones, zero three, inclusive environments, students have a right to be identified by the name that corresponds with gender identity, and disregard for this policy as a violation. My, so, um, uh, I may not have any problems with that. My only question is, because this, the, the whole idea of a student ID card was for safety and security purposes. I didn't know if there was some reason of, from that perspective, of why you wouldn't want to do that, but I don't really know. But, but I did want to share that public comment that came in.
Board Member Boozer Struth?
Yeah, thank you. I did read that comment, and I do think that the, one, the existing policy does cover that. It sounds like there might have been, you know, administrative error that needs to be corrected. And if they run into issues, the inclusive environments policy certainly covers that. You know, that the ID card would be the, the preference, just like the, you know, the name that the, you know, that the, um, system has for graduation certificates, things like that. Um, but it, you know, I know that we do have references to other policies that if we feel that this needs to be reiterated, we should put it in here. The other board policy of the inclusive environments that, that has been identified as significant. I mean, that would be one, one way to demonstrate that we are assurances that we would, will follow that policy when it comes to your ID card.
That's a good point.
I can certainly, I mean, we do, we list out any board policies that are related to the policy, that, and so we can certainly include that.
And I have a question about, or a comment, but, um, uh, Board, um, Board Chair Walker?
Yes, I did. I just, um, I think all of these are very important to our student ID cards. I mean, I think that there's also the thoughts of hidden disabilities. There's also the thoughts of allergies, severe allergies. There's so many things that can go on the back which are necessary in the cases of emergency, especially where we are now. Um, and so just, um, just leaving it open for the superintendent and then letting him know that, hey, hopefully there's a policy by which we can, or a process by which we can add these things in or give him recommendations to put them in. Because I don't, just don't think there's any way we're going to be able to hit them all. Because those are the two I just thought of, just listening, but we can put a number of things on the back for ease of information for a child for safety and security purposes. I don't know your thoughts, Robin. It's a question. I don't know how much space we literally have on the back of an ID card. But I just thought of those two as well. I'm sure that there's parents that have a plethora of them. So maybe we write it broadly, but then we ask the superintendent to create a process whereby he can help to prioritize those, you know, like once or twice a year. It's hefty for cost as well.
What, what, I, so is there anything like our ID card, or, you know, employee ID cards? There's not a heck of a lot of room on the back, so I don't know how much you could get on. But secondly, um, I, I mean, he could certainly include la, language in the administrative procedure that would address that, um, to provide that option. Uh, the only thing I was thinking, if you're in an emergency situation, and one of the reasons of having a student ID card, let's just say, I don't know, something terrible's happened to the student, and now they can't talk or anything, and you're calling. You know, it might be at a school activity or something, and you're calling, but you don't have the student's actual name. So you're trying to get ahold of the parent. I mean, there's so many things. So I, I was, I didn't know if that would be a factor or other, uh, from a safety and security purpose. Because the previous policy, or the current policy, that's all it keeps referring to is safety and security. So that was my only question.
Board Chair Walker?
Yeah, I guess the only, I love that, because now, you know, of course, we get ideas. I guess when they go to take a look at the system, maybe we could investigate with him if it can just have a scan on it of some sort so that it can have all of that information in a database. Because there's so much, and he can continuously go in, that means it's only one sunk cost for the system. But in a backend, he can go in and, um, you know, continuously add different aspects to it. Maybe it can even link to synergy. So maybe we just ask what can be done. There's so much technology right now, but there's a list of things we can put on there for safety and security. Imagine a child passing out, and you can just scan this thing, and all of a sudden you have all the information you need about them. Thanks.
So, um, I did have a comment, and I just wanted to say that I think, uh, the consideration for this policy is, um, with the, the pronouns is, which is a really, um, great suggestion. And I think that that is so important for students to feel that they feel seen and heard in school. I also think about, um, just the communication in with the school. You may have a parent who has a kindergartner, or a third grader, or a middle schooler who hasn't, you know, who hasn't communicated to their parent that they would prefer to be called them or they, or she or her. And, and I think that if a parent were to see them coming home with, you know, an ID that says something very different, I do think we have to also navigate, how do we, how do we work with parents in, in those things? And I think that could be a safety, security thing for a student, right? They go home and to a parent who isn't accepting of that, and that puts them in danger in some way. And so I think that, um, you know, those are things that we should be, um, considering, um, is, uh, just the other implications of what could or couldn't happen.
That's a good point, and I want to go back and look at our policy on LGBTQ plus people. Because I do think we have some language about when a student hasn't informed their parent and, and, um, it's not our responsibility to inform the parent, so.
Yeah. Uh, and, 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 and Robin, you will appreciate this, and then I'll, I'll, I'm going to be quiet and pass this on. But I think there may also be ca, case law for you to look at, because I know that there are some school districts that have actually navigated this. And they've had incidents like this, and they may offer some, you know,
Mm-hmm.
starting point for what we might want to do as an example of like what worked, what didn't work. Um, so just wanted to say that too, if you're doing research on this. Um, so Struth?
Yeah, I, I think that inclusive policies covered, you know, that discussion around, um, students, um, communicating within the building and, and not necessarily home. And we, we had, you know, quite a bit of discussion about that, but I guess I would just want to make sure we're not, excuse me, saying that the student cannot on their own proactively say, this is the name for my ID. I think we're not, that the policy would not allow for that. Like, the student can choose. The policy says that, like, so I just want to make sure we're not saying.
Let's say that.
We, we had a, we discussed a lot about the role of, of parent notification and safety when we passed that policy. And I think we got there.
Yeah, so maybe we can, so maybe with this one, I think if we're going to include that language, and I'm, I know that came as like a comment. Um, we can just revisit what those policies said and then have a, a, additional discussion on, um, on this piece. and then have a, a, a additional discussion on, um, on this piece and perhaps come back to it. Um, but just curious what the committee thinks on that. Are there any objections to us perhaps tabling this discussion and, um, coming back after we have the, the clarification on the language and other policies? Um, Robin?
No, I, I'm fine with that. I was going to say, I, I'll go back and look at the other policy because it might be able to pull language right from that policy that would address this very same issue.
Yeah, it, it just doesn't hurt to look in and see. So, um, so if there are no objections to us tabling this policy, policy not, uh, twenty five sixty six to the next policy and governance meeting for further discussion, um, then we will do that. And there being no objection, policy twenty one sixty six, student identification cards will be tabled into the next policy, um, in governance meeting. Um, Board Member Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, I apologize. I tried to get my hand up when you gave us that last chance. Um, I just want to note that the AP on, um, uh, gender, uh, identity is actually, I think, where these, the, the use, where you choose to have your name, um, is, is in that. I think inclusive policies covers it, but I think that very specific, we've been talking about this point about, um, you know, with the, the student asking for this. I think it's in the AP is the original AP.
Okay. Our check.
Thank you so much, Robin. All right, we're going to move into item five point O, policies for second consideration.
So good question, Chair. You said that it's going to be postponed, right?
Yes, postponed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, so there are not nine items for consideration, um, in item five point O, policies for second consideration. Item five point one, school year twenty four, twenty five work plan. The Chair, I recognize Mrs. Welsh for an overview of the school year twenty four, twenty five work plan.
So Sid, do you mind posting it, please? So we, we've actually already started, um, implementing the work plan, but we never really spent that much time talking about the work plan. And I know, um, the time will be coming, uh, where, um, uh, Chair Briggs will be up there to, talking to the board about what the plan is for the, uh, for the school year. So I thought it's good that we get through this so that we can, um, just finalize it. So this, I'm not going to go through each one because I know we're in short on time, but you can see what we have put in. There are several, if you recall from when the super tense recommendation, we have numerous ones added that came through, uh, because of laws that were passed this past year. Um, and then I did also incorporate, uh, attendance because, um, Board Member Boozer Strutter had asked that we'd bring that back for discussion as well as board policy five one four three bullying, harassment, intimidation, because, um, I know that Board Member Miller was also very concerned about that. And when we had seen that, finally got to see the data report related to bullying, we thought it might be important to, uh, come back and review that along with the policy and make possibly make some changes to that policy. So I did incorporate that. I do want to point out though, that if you look at, um, um, for tonight's meeting, you'll see all these recisions which are, we're going to, are we send the Chair, the Vice Chair and the Secretary, Treasurer and Executive Officers, um, uh, because we're, we're going to, it'll be all incorporated into the officer at one that we just did. And then actions by individual board members. That one is, um, actually, if you look at that, that's already addressed in the Code of Conduct, so there's no reason to have that. So my only questions I had, which were, um, they had to do with ninety three sixty one and ninety three sixty seven. Is that correct? What do you have up here? Yes. Um, in terms of meeting, because I believe, I do believe that there's, there's procedures really should be addressing that. There was some, I mean, there's not that much information about it, but it does talk in the procedures about meeting time and place and quorum. Um, and then there's, uh, of course, the appendix where it has some of the laws back there. So my recommendation was for rescission, but I wanted to make sure before, in case you're absolutely, uh, you know, what your thoughts are. And then on top of that, I did want to say that we also talked last year that we were going to bring policy thirty three, twenty three back on purchasing. Um, and that, and, um, but at that time, the committee asked if we could, if, um, Ms. Johnson, who is the purchasing director, if she would come and provide a training for, for the, um, for the, for the committee, actually for the Board of Eds, so that better on, being better able to understand the policy. And so I, we definitely need to come back and, and, um, put the policy in, but I didn't put it anywhere because I don't know when you plan to do your training. And I know there was some conversation about doing online training, but I think purchasing is one of those subjects that you're going to probably want to do in person just because you may have lots of questions about the information that she's sharing. And I, and, and I know the whole idea last year was that you wanted to make sure you were informed, you know, an informed decision maker as you went through this policy. So, and I also know that I think there's been some co- conversation in the BAFA Committee about looking at thirty three, twenty three. So I guess the question is, when do you plan to do your training so that we know then where to put policy thirty three, twenty three in, um, during the, you know, it, within the year? And then the other one that I had was not included in any of the recommendations, but I am going to ask whether or not this would be something that, um, that you would like to incorporate into the, uh, to the work plan is bylaw ninety three fifty four, which is now policy one, but it's about the, uh, board members vouchers reimbursement of expense. Again, I think this is another one that had come up in the ABFA Committee, and I think concerns relate to monitoring that, uh, you know, what is our process for monitoring? So I didn't know if you wanted to incorporate that policy, this, that in also as an addition one. Um, and then one more yet. Um, so Shabby McCray from my office had the opportunity to be in a meeting, um, uh, with, uh, Kim Taylor, who's the Vice Chair of the Education Committee. And she asked the question about, uh, the fact that our new cellphone policy, policy, board policy five one eight O, uh, student use of social media and PEDs in schools, actually, uh, talks about that each school principal will make the decision if they want to, um, allow students to use cell phones beyond what the policy actually says, which the policy basically says, the only time you're really going to be using cell phones is, uh, you can use cell phones is you're on your way to and from school, on the bus, whatever. But that once you get to school, the principal does have the right to designate a, uh, location and a time to use the, the, uh, cellphone, but that would be up to the principal. And her question was about, uh, would the, if, why wouldn't the board consider saying that was the responsibility of the superintendent? So I didn't know if that was something that you wanted to have a conversation. I will say cell phones are big, uh, major hot topic, which I'm sure you're all aware of. Um, and it's, who knows? The state legislature could end up mandating a policy that would end up changing your policy. So I don't know what your thinking is, but I do definitely would want to make, get some confirmation on thirty three, twenty three, ninety three, fifty four, and whether or not you do want to put, uh, this cellphone policy up on the agenda, uh, you know, on the list for as a conversation for the future.
Thank you so much, Robin. Um, I saw, uh, Board Chair Walker's hand and then, uh, Board Member Boozer Strutter. You are muted.
Just a quick one. Are we voting on anything else tonight only because I have a seven o'clock meeting? So I just wanted to check that.
We are.
Because I know I make quorum.
On the recisions.
Okay, just if, okay. The second piece is, Robin, our training, um, is in October with the, um, Purchasers Department.
Oh, it is?
Yep, it's in October, and we meet on October twenty, maybe sixth or something like that. You gotta look at the calendar, might be twenty fourth. Oh, we have the, thank you, Revel or, um, Cindy to let us know that. And then the last piece on, what was the last thing? Oh, cell phones. So MDSE is look, is, is looking at the entire state for cellphone policies. So my record would be that we don't decide anything here, but I do know that the superintendent, um, it has come to his attention a number of times in that M- MDSE is really working on the, the state cellphone policy, and then we'll fall in line with whatever that is. And then it'll trickle to us to see if there's anything we need to do by way of, um, our policies. So those are the three things I wanted to add, and then I have, I, I'm going to stay for the question, then I really have to drop. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, I'm wet. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you so much. I, I, I was going to say MSD State Board had the cellphone policy on their agenda today. So there's move, movement above us that I agree with, um, Board Chair Walker, that we should see, see how that goes, but I, um, I do, um, you know, I'll reserve comments for if we do bring it back, but I have a feeling we're going to have to bring it back just based on movement happening. Um, but I would, I, I, I do think clearly hearing this, there's a legislative agenda piece around, um, uh, local control on this decision possibly, that if we're already hearing that this is being discussed, that, that maybe we do need our legislative agenda to say something proactive around that.
Proact, what do you, like, what do you mean by proactive?
That, that we're saying that the Board of Education should be making decis, the cellphone policy decisions, but not the state legislature. It's another local control issue. Like if it, if it's really that ac- active, considering a delegate has met one on one with, um, uh, the person you mentioned, that, um, that, you know, maybe we need to be proactive at this point, although I, you know, I'm sure Mabe is being proactive on our behalf too on that issue.
And I, I would say, Robin, to that point, I, I, I feel like you're thinking about this um, because partly I know that there are a number of states that are rolling out actual legislation on cellphone restrictions. And there, and some are, some are heavier, heavier, heavier handed and others aren't. I think that, um, what we should probably do is figure out what works for our district, and I think that's where the advocacy can be because then maybe what MSD is proposing, maybe, or legislators are proposing, may fit with what we think works for Prince George's County. Um, but I don't know if I necessarily think that we should have like a bullet point that says like it should be full local decision making, even though we'd likely be, be going beyond what MSD is saying. Um, so I just wanted to, to say that as a, as a consideration.
Um, I will tell you that we did have a bill, we did have a bill that went through last year that had on cellphone policy. We did oppose it for the reason, not because, uh, uh, whatever it said about the cellphone policy, but because of the fact that it countered to local board authority, and that was the authority of the boards to be able to make their own policy.
Um, Board Chair Walker?
Yes, um, I really have to, I'm so sorry, drop after this. Um, but, um, what I wanted to just, um, add is that cellphone policies is not just asked by one legislator. Believe me, there's more than ten who have tried to address this with us. It, we just know that at a state level, they're looking at it. So versus doing competing priorities right now, I'm happy to walk into this thing if we believe as a board, which we don't know yet, that we want to stand firm on one belief. The thing about cell phones is that we're not going to have a standard belief for it. So my record to our Chair, uh, Jonathan Briggs, is that we wait on what is happening and just see it a little bit and then decide if we want to move forward. Um, on that legislation, if we want to change anything, it's due October first. And I don't think that we, we can talk about it as a board, but I don't think we'll be prepared for that, but we can definitely advocate.
Okay. Um, I wanted to say.
I have to drop. Is there a vote that I can help on really quickly? Because I really got to go.
Before you go, I wanted to make the statement that there are no active votes. They're all, if there is an objection, um, so if you stay on, we can have, we can have quorum.
I can't. I'm sorry. What if, I, I do have an objection, but I'm happy to go with whatever you all have right now. I'm sorry, Zapor, I can text Zapor and see if she can come back.
Yeah, I think we, for the public, we owe it to them to get through this. I mean, we have so much stuff to get through. So if we can, I mean, even if you're going off camera and you're just muting, but I do think just quorum wise, if we can get, um, someone on here and then we can, um, get through.
Revel, can you, um, call Zapor Miller back? I do think it is extremely important. Um, however, me going into a wake is also very important, and I really appreciate the fact for that. I really do so to the public. I apologize, but I really have to go. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Um, Revel, can we, can we see if we can get, uh, thank you.
Do we, do we know, um, the availability of Board Member Jackson, who's also a member of the committee?
Believe, I'm not sure he's still a member of the committee. If I'm being a hundred percent, I think that he, um, decided to step down.
I think Miller's in another meeting.
Okay. You know, if we're remember Jackson, um, Cindy, I know you had that communication with him.
I could double check and see if he's available.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so we can't do anything moving forward until we have, because I think unless there's any other additional discussion about the work plan.
One other question about the work plan is, we didn't talk about necessarily ninety three fifty four, which is the board members vouchers and reimbursement, uh, to expenses. Um, uh, since it had come up in ABFA, and I guess, um, the is, the issue of just ensuring we have adequate monitoring and we're, you know, you know, doing, I guess, all the checks and balances. I didn't know whether or not you wanted to add that as a policy for this upcoming year or not. I will say, I have to say, this work plant is tight. There's lots and lots of stuff going on, and once the legislative session goes into operation, um, it'll make it difficult to add too much more into the process.
Yeah. Wha- what, your expert suggestion sounds like that we should probably hold. Well, what would be the impact of us not including that?
Well, I mean, uh, I mean, you still have, you still have, like, that policy does, I mean, that is, um, is a bylaw right now, but it does address what you're, um, like, all the requirements. It's, you know, you're, it's, I'm going to just point it up real quick to look at it. It's pretty ninety three fifty four. And it's not as old as many of the other ones. It's two thousand seventeen, so it's not, it's not as old. It does, you know, it goes into detail about what's allowable expenditures, reimbursement, what's unallowable expenditures. That goes in local meal. I mean, it is in pretty much detail, really. So, um, I don't know that, I mean, I really don't know because it does talk about that, uh, everything is supposed to be collected by the board office and then transmitted to the office and chief financial officer. So there is, there is a system in place. So, I mean, I, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know all your internal operation. That would probably be a question, maybe even to ask Revel. I don't know. Um, but the, it is one of our ones. It actually does have a lot of information, you know, not just a single liner.
Sounds like you're, and, and Revel, do you have any context here? And we have time to figure things out.
Nothing additive at the moment, but if you want to take it offline, I'm happy to.
Okay, great. Um, Cindy, any, did we hear back from Brandon? He said he can't make it, or he says no altogether?
No response, yeah.
No response, okay. Um, and I think what we can do is, if you don't mind, Cindy, I think we can, we can probably say, because we're going to edit this out anyway, so I think we can stop the recording and then make some more calls and then see, probably give it another five minutes in it. Right. Um, so if there are no objections, the committee shall present the school year twenty four, twenty five work plan to the full board in October during the introduction of the committee's introduction and charge report. Um, are there any objections? There being no objections, the school year twenty four, twenty five work plan will be presented to the full board for consideration. We're going to move on to item five point two, policy forty one thirteen, community involvement in the principal selection process. I recognize Mrs. Welsh for an overview of policy forty one thirteen, community involvement in the principal selection process. Mrs. Welsh?
Cindy, will you please, um, put it up, please, the policy? Um, so this, this policy is a policy that had been up for, um, going through the process. And then right as we were closing up during the end of the approval process with the board, we did get this public comment. So the policy itself is, uh, is updated to reflect the support of everyone in the communities essential for, uh, success of our schools and that, um, families in community should be engaged as part of their shared responsibility to be a part of, um, the, um, for improving academic outcomes for students. So the policy has the following standards, um, to, to ensure that local stakeholders play an integral role. The school principal vacancy will be posted on the school website. Stakeholders will be invited to complete a leadership profile survey to solicit their feedback on the qualities and qualifications they believe are essential for a new principal. An interview panel that is made up of stakeholders will participate in the interview activity, and stakeholders is defined as, um, um, members, uh, in the community, um, and students and teachers who are in that actual school community that has the need for the principal. And then at least one of the stakeholders shall be a parent of a student receiving special education or section five oh four services. And then the panel of stakeholders should provide their recommendations to the superintendent, and the superintendent shall consider the candidates recommended by the panel of stakeholders. So, um, they, these are all the steps that the policy addresses in terms, or standards, I should say, in terms of making sure that. um, they, these are all the steps that the policy addresses in terms, or standards, I should say, in terms of making sure the community is involved in the selection of the principal.
Thank you so much, uh, Mrs. Welsh. Are there any questions to policy forty-one thirteen, principal selection process? Alright, seeing none, and you're the only person that talks to the second committee about that. Um, if there are no objections, the committee shall uh recommend policy forty-one thirteen to the full board for public uh comment consideration. There being no objections, policy uh forty-one thirteen, community involvement in the prin- uh principal selection process will be recommended to the full board for public commi- uh comment consideration. Now moving on to item five point three, policy eighty-one hundred, Board of Education Standing Committees and Focus Work Groups. Um, I recognize Mrs. Welsh for an overview of policy eighty-one hundred, Board of Education Standing Committees and Focus Work Groups.
So um, policy eighty-one was a policy that came back um, that we had, we had done, I think, last year, but we brought it back because we now have a new standing committee, which is the audit committee. So this policy um is, was revised to reflect the fact that we do have an audit committee. So it basically um describes the different work uh, standing committees and focus work groups. And now we do have four standing committees, standing committees, which is academic achievement committee, operation budgets and fiscal affairs committee, policy and governance committee, and the audit committee. And then it also talks about the fact that um there will be focused work groups, then they are required to provide an interim final written progress to the board. And that um, the superintendent should uh designate at least one secondary level staff to serve as at least a liaison to each committee and focus work group for the administration. I do, I would like to ask one question as we look through this policy, uh, this um policy to make sure that I actually, we had a lot of discussion about which months of the year the audit committee was going to be presenting to the board. And so I actually wanted Board Member Boozer Struther to have a moment just to look at, if you go down to um, it's under the standard, standard seven, um Cindy, if you keep scrolling down. I just want to make sure I had got it correctly. Keep, he keeps scrolling. So I have, um, so the introduction of committee members, it would be in September, the operations budget and fiscal affairs committee and the audit committee. And then um, for the progress report, i- if you scroll down a little bit further, Cindy, um, or scroll up, I guess, I don't know, which, so you're gonna keep, no, keep progressing through the po- policy a minute. Uh, the audit committee would be in March, if that's correct. And then um, the, the outcomes and output, the final meeting for the audit committee would be June. Is that correct? Did I capture that correctly? I just want to make sure I had the right months.
Am I being asked to speak out of?
I'm sorry. I should, I'm, I apologize, but I did, I, uh, Chair Briggs, I just want to make sure that we had the right, the right months of the year for the audit committee.
Yeah, no, um, Board Member Boozer Struther.
Okay, thank you. Um, the um, I mean, I, the int, I believe the intention was to follow operations budget and fiscal affairs schedule. The um, this is for all future years. We already have um, permission from the chair of the board that in year one, as we get up and running, that we will be, that we will be reporting later on this first one, that would have been September, will likely be November, October or November. So for all future years, I was assuming that it would follow operations budget and fiscal affairs, because essentially audit was part of that schedule. Because of the, the work was happening there. So unless there is something to, I don't, I don't see a reason why it shouldn't follow ABFA the same schedule.
So the same schedule. Okay, then I'll make that change before we send it on.
Yeah, and um, Board Member Jackson is the chair of audit right now, um, if he had any.
Think, I know, I know that Board Member Jackson joined.
I concur. I, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I concur. Um, yes, definitely, um, Vice Chair of the Audit Committee has spoken um, correctly about that. We uh, wanted to kind of mirror ABFA's uh schedule. So, um, she's spot on. So I think due to us trying to get the, the, the committee up and running, I think that we may be delayed. Uh, I think Oct, late October, um, I mean, October, November is probably when we'll be able to um do that. Thank you.
Right. Are there other questions about this policy, policy eighty-one hundred? Alright, if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend policy eighty-one hundred to the full board for public comment consideration. There being no objections, the policy eighty-one hundred, Board of Education Standing Committees and Focus Work Groups will be recommended to the full board for public comment consideration. Now having a block, the following policies. Item five point four, policy ninety-two ten, chair rescission. Item five point five, policy ninety-two twenty, vice chair rescission. Item five point six, policy ninety-two thirty, secretary, treasurer and executive officer rescission. Item five point seven, policy ninety-two seventy, actions by individual board members rescission. Item five point eight, policy ninety-three sixty-one, meetings, time and place rescission. And item five point nine, ninety-three sixty-seven, meetings, quorum and adoption of the formal action rescission. Uh, I recognize Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of uh, agenda items five point three through five point nine.
So um, all these policies have to do with um, I'm starting with five, five point four, uh, chair rescission. So these are really redundancies and policies that we already, that we, well, for the chair, vice chair, secretary. Those are all redundant now with the officers' policy. So, uh, so that's why they would be requested to be rescinded. And then the actions by individual board members is already addressed in deploy, is the um code of conduct for the board members, zero one zero eight. So that would be a rescission. And then um, by understanding was meetings timed and placed and the um, the other one, the um forum, adoption of formal action was already, was addressed through the rules of procedure. So that would be a redundancy also.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. If there are no objections, the committee shall recommend the policies under agenda item five point three through five point eight to the full board for public comment consideration. There being no objections, the policies under agenda items five point three through five point nine will be recommended to the full board for public comment consideration. Uh, we're now gonna move on to item six point O, policies for third consideration, first reader at committee level. Um, the two items for consideration will be considered as a consent agenda. These policies were distributed to the general public for comment. No comments were received. Um, so we have item six point one, policy fifty-one twenty-one, grading and reporting for elementary and secondary students. And po, uh, item six point two, policy fifty-one thirty-four, uh, thirty-four, school clubs and organizations rescission. If there are no objections, the committee shall recommend policies fifty-one twenty-one and fifty-one thirty-four to the full board for first consideration. Great. There being no objections, policy fifty-one twenty-one and fifty-one thirty-four will be recommended to the full board for first consideration. We'll now move on to item seven point O, closing remarks from the chair and adjournment. Um, so this is closing and this is adjournment. Please note that the next virtual policy and governance committee meeting will be on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education webpage for meeting information and updates. There being no further business, I want to say thank you for um, the really great discussions that we had this evening. Um, the time is now seven thirty PM on the dot, uh, in the September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, policy and governance committee meeting is adjourned.